Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular school committee meeting of Monday, March 2nd. Please rise and salute the flag.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have, I believe it's too soon to approve the minutes from last Monday. Is that correct? Is that why we don't have the copies?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, we'll move right into the school committee member's student reports, starting with the school committee chair. Tomorrow night, the school committee will be having a joint session with the city council to review candidates who have applied for the vacant school committee post, and we will be taking a vote tomorrow night. So, hopefully at our next meeting, we'll have our seventh member of the school committee. Today was Read Across America Day, and it was really great to travel around to the different schools. And I think because it's Dr. Seuss's birthday, it seems that most of the books we read were by Dr. Seuss. And I have to say, it's kind of a challenge to read Dr. Seuss upside down.
Yes, to a classroom of kids.
But I think I did okay. And I want to thank everyone who participated, all the teachers who got involved, all the committee members that came out. It was really a lot of fun. Also, last week, we had the State of the City on Wednesday. I want to thank the school members who were able to make it to that event. There was a remark that I was focusing half a page on each issue that was important to highlight in the city, but I had a page and a half dedicated to education. There's a reason why, because this is really the heart of what we are doing. This is not just, you know, during budget season, a large part of our budget or a large part of the city employees, but this is really about shaping the future of our kids. And there is really a lot of exciting accomplishments and activities that we are doing. So, wanted to make sure that we highlighted that during the State of the City. All right, moving on to the resource committee.
Nothing to report at this time.
Policy?
Once we have our new member, we will schedule a policy meeting.
Great. And student support?
We met tonight, covered a lot of material. We're looking at what maybe some of our goals might be if for our homework policy, as the homework policy will come up, I think, at our next policy meeting. When we do get that policy meeting, we've got some updates on other issues, you know, things that have come up in meetings here before about access to a lot of the programs school to school, you know, trying to level that as much as possible so that kids get appropriate access, whatever school they might be attending. Got an update about Park, and it sounds like the district's in good shape heading into testing season, so you should all be talking to your children about what they're hearing from their schools about Park. And for the schools that are doing it online, there's just been really great preparation with kids feeling, you know, feeling out the technology, making sure that they're ready to handle it, and that's no small feat. There are resources that schools can make available to parents to try out some of the practice questions, and that's a treat. So, yeah, I encourage all parents to do that. We talked about, you know, what we can provide for student handbooks for new parents, and got a little bit of a lesson, I think, from one of the principals, that there can be a lot of new families in this district any given day, any given week or month. And so, we've talked about some approaches, and I don't know if anybody wants to talk about that in the administration, but just ways that we might move forward on really kind of making sure people feel welcome as they're coming into the buildings new. We talked about Academic Support Center at Fitchburg High School, the salute to the flag, in fact, at all the different schools and where that's at and what the rules are about that, what the goals are about that, too. And then possibly looking into service learning opportunities for students. And that, I don't think, really got explored a lot, so if you're interested in something like that, you might want to attend the next support subcommittee meeting. So, we have, we covered a lot, and I think there's a lot of follow-up that's going to happen on each of those positions, issues. Anything I missed?
Very good summary, Jen.
Yeah, it was a wonderful meeting. Thank you, Ed Rohn, for coming to, coming to that meeting. Lovely to have parents come to our student support meetings. If you want to explore the Park system, go to P A R C C dot Pearson dot com, P E A R S O N dot com. Find the topic at lower left, Test Preparation, and it looks pretty logical from there. Does that seem right, Paula?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. So, Park, P A R C C dot Pearson dot com, and then Test Preparation, and you can take the test. Or an example of it.
Okay. Personal?
No meeting scheduled at this time, but we should be getting an idea what the budget's going to be pretty soon. And we have seven groups that we will be negotiating with this coming year, so we should be getting busy.
The executive canoe report, last Friday, we met with the Boston Globe editorial board to talk to them about the Building Upon What Works campaign, and just to reiterate, this is that $75 million ask of the state over three years, so $25 million each year for early childhood education after extended day and other innovations. So, we are trying to market and get whatever support that we can, and if I see anything in the Globe about this, I will forward those on to you. We don't have a student here today, so we're going to move on to business and communications.
Well, I had a point for new business, question about open forum and parents who would like to be able to come speak, or I think last week, we had a parent who was here for a long part of the meeting, but the open forum didn't happen until near the end, and eventually she left. I happened to know her, so I made sure I went hunted down and asked what she wanted to kind of talk about, and in the end, she wanted to support the move to the calendar. But it would have been nice for her to have access earlier on, because the meetings can get long. So, I just, I was curious how much of it is, you know, a format that we have to follow, and how much of it is something we can tweak a little bit?
So, when, I think, a few of us started on the committee about seven years ago, the public testimony was at the beginning, and then there was a demand to have it at the end, because there was a number of participants who wanted to comment on what we discussed. It was hard for them to comment when we hadn't discussed anything yet. And then somehow, the beginning one seemed to be redundant, so we just kept the end. So, there's a couple of things we can do. We can go back to having the public testimony at the beginning and the end, and myself as chair, or somebody stepping in as chair, can make that determination as to whether we should have one or both, as long as we have one, and maybe make that clear depending on, you know, what's on the docket for the day. So, can we make that note?
Yeah, I'm doing that right now. Yep.
Great.
I've got a couple of things. First off, and I'll ask the superintendent to set out a notice, there's an author named James King, who's published by Penguin Books, which is a pretty big deal publisher, and he's coming to the Fitchburg Library this coming Thursday for Authors Night at 6:30. And I just wanted to put it out there, this is a book that high schoolers would really enjoy. It's about a family that kind of is falling apart, but they come together by going on a road trip, at least some of them. It's a very, very fun comic novel. James King is the author, this Thursday at the library. Also, superintendent just put into my hands, Harley Where Did You Go?, written by Christina Giadoni Smith, who is one of our teachers at the Goodrich Academy. And I'm looking at this and thinking, oh, my gosh, Twin City Paws needs to reach out to her, because she's got a story about having a dog, and it's a published book, and I, one would like to sort of share it with the school committee, as the superintendent asked. It kind of dovetails with the work that my, that Wendell Cat, my registered therapy cat and I have been doing in the autism classroom at South Street, working on having animal-assisted therapy in one school. So, that's, that's pretty great. Also, a shout-out to Brian Baxter. Mr. Baxter is teaching a local history section at the Fitchburg High School. There was a story about a student who did a Facebook page for John Fitch, and maybe we can get this student to come to school committee, Jana? It'd be great to hear from her. Here in the Memorial Library, there is a shelf dedicated to local history, The Doris Kirkpatrick, City in the River, books, other books, and we're talking at Curriculum and Instruction, Student Support, about that, that local history component. National Poetry Month is coming up. I will be getting some poems by Caroline Atherton Mason out on the email and can be shared with administrators and teachers, because again, the, everyone here, we're all local, we need to be proud of Fitchburg. And finally, Wizard of Oz is going to be coming up, April 16th and 17th, at the high school. The student assistant at Riverfront Children's Theater, Alicia Giannetti, who, if you go to Morin Square Diner, she might be waiting on you on Saturdays. She is the Giannetti's daughter, and she's a terrific actor, and she's also a terrific theater person. There's going to be a free theater workshop Saturday, March 14th, from 11:00 to 12:30 at the Fitchburg Library, and I, we have a lot of Fitchburg school kids who come, and it's free, so do come if you can. And Alicia, who's playing the Wicked Witch in Wizard of Oz, will be there. So, can't wait to see Wizard of Oz, and I think that's it for me.
Great. Just one communication, the state usually picks the farm to kick off their maple season, so if anybody's interested, the state has picked Halls Hills Farm.
Yay!
And will be kicking off on Friday, March 6th, from 11:00 a.m. to noon. We're expecting the governor, the secretary of Energy and Environment, the DCR, I think that there's a whole host of people coming in from Boston. They do a really great job, really doing sort of farm-to-table, doing, you know, really organic and just relating to family and kids. So, I know it's during the school day, but if anybody can make it down.
And they're going to be tapping the trees six feet up the tree, because that's how high the snow is.
That's right.
That's true.
But if you do go, I know the owners, Jim and Allison Latanzi, you know, they'll show you around their maple barn, they'll show you how they do it.
What is it again? What's the dates again? Just a...
It's this Friday.
Oh, Friday.
11:00 a.m.
And the governor's very tall, he can reach above the snowbank.
Actually, that might be why he's coming.
Yeah.
Andre, we could use your help, too.
I know, I can see that.
I'd just like to take a moment of silence for a former city councillor, Tom Conry, who passed away a few weeks ago. He was a lifelong Fitchburg resident, loved the city of Fitchburg, and graduated from Fitchburg High in 1954, so if we could just have a moment of silence for him.
Thank you, Marissa. Thanks. There's no more communications or new business, we're going to turn it over to the superintendent.
Okay. Just a reminder to all parents out there, if you haven't already, because there've been a lot of notices going out online, you can sign up for, to receive emails from the superintendent's office on, if you go to the Fitchburg Public School website, fitchburgpublicschools.org, there's a button that says, you know, sign up for email contacts. You just press that button, takes you to a link where you put in your email. So, we just sent out a survey on school days, and I oftentimes send out press releases, copies of press releases and things, so anyone who's interested should do that.
Oh, quick, we forgot to mention the gala, since you're mentioning getting in touch with the superintendent.
Yep.
Our next meeting is Thursday, March 12th, at 3:30. We'd love to have parents come in. If you are able to contribute an item for our absolutely smashing silent auction, please call the superintendent's office at 345-3220. We can use gift certificates to area restaurants, salons, items, actual physical items. We have gift baskets being created by all of our schools. The event is May 2nd, which is a Saturday, at the high school, 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock, and we'd love to see you at our meeting, or just reach out to the superintendent's office if you want to help. You can kind of be an email support. The Sentinel will be covering this next week. And we'll keep reporting out on this, because this is their first one.
Okay. So, moving right along, first, the student highlights, and tonight, we have students and the principal here from Goodrich Academy, Mr. Mike Pellon. The students are Sabrina Ramandelli and Joe Boucher. So, come on up.
Back in December, we were fortunate to have a guest speaker come to spend an afternoon with us at Goodrich Academy. His name is Greg Bedard. Greg had family locally in Fitchburg, grew up in Athol. He is now one of the top writers with the National Football League, and he works for ESPN, the magazine, and also ESPN Network. He shared with our students his experiences along the way to reach where he is today, his humble beginnings covering Little League baseball, and then moving up to some college sports. And then finally, he is one of the chief reporters for New England Patriots. And he shared with our kids his daily contacts with people like Tom Brady, Robert Kraft, and our kids were absolutely intrigued by this. The kids really enjoyed their time with him, and I think he engaged our students because he spoke about how difficult it was to get to where he is today. He struggled to get there, and I think our kids identified with that. So, I brought the kids tonight to share their experiences and their time with Mr. Bedard, but I will tell you that he did such a good job that I immediately grabbed him after, and I said, "You've got to tell me what you're doing on June 4th." And he said, "For Goodrich Academy, I'm not even going to look. I'm available." So, he's going to speak at our graduation.
Woo! That's great!
So, Sabrina?
Well, when Mr. Bedard came in, I was very happy to get that opportunity, because I know that not many people have come to Goodrich Academy and were able to even give up that kind of time for that. So, I was very happy and pleased about that. Hearing about where he came from, his story was very intriguing. It was inspiring, because, you know, he was a guy who had said that he had struggled in college, he wasn't sure what his major was going to be, and to go from somewhere where he was so lost and he found himself, it was really inspiring, especially, I think, to most of my school. If I could see him again, what I would tell him is, I hope that he can come back, because I know that every year, we get new students, and I think his story is one that should be heard from our kids. He's a very nice man. He's, I was very interested, too. I wanted to be a sports news broadcaster for a very long time in my life. I work on the radio station now, WPKZ, just a little bit on the weekends, and telling him that, he's like, "Oh, well, maybe you should pursue it." And I actually plan on going into the Coast Guard, but I plan on majoring in broadcasting, because they're going to be obviously taking care of my college education, so. And it's nice that I, he just gave me that little bit of oomph. I really appreciated it, and I hope he comes back.
Very good. Joe?
Like you said, it was a life-changing experience. I didn't really know what I wanted to do, and I had doubts on what to do, honestly, in college and stuff, because like, some kids in Fitchburg don't get the experiences that other people get, obviously, because we're a small town. But to see that he came from this area, and he's, what he's doing now is life-changing, definitely.
Now, let me just say that, you know, I see Greg on TV. He's on a program on the New England Sports News Network with, called Felger and Maz. And for someone that you see on television and somebody who works with, like, the NFL's chief writer, Peter King, and working, you know, at a high television level in sports, to take the time, I mean, he spent three hours at our school. And the questions that not only the kids had, but the staff had, were outstanding. So, I mean, we just have to ask him back. We did, we got him, we're very fortunate, so we're looking forward already to graduation. Thank you for having us tonight. Any questions at all?
Thank you.
You go ahead.
Well, I have a comment. I just want to tell you, kids, that I think we're really fortunate to have you. The commitment that you guys are making to your education, and I think it's a real thoughtful commitment, because, you know, you've probably had some things you've had to deal with, right? And I just think you guys are a great testimony to the city, and so, I just wanted you to hear that. So, it's nice that he came in, and you felt really, and it sounds incredible, but I think you guys are doing that hard work, too, and that's pretty cool.
You know, as I said here last week, and the kids realize it, it's you that have given us this opportunity, and we appreciate that.
You've got to take those, right?
Thank you.
Great.
Well, I have a quickie comment for Sabrina and Joe. So, I'm a journalist, and Matt over there is a journal. We've both have been journalists for super-long times, and I've done broadcast, and I've done television, I've done, I've done television, I've done film, I've done a lot of radio. And the key to it all is that both of you came here tonight, and you were articulate, and you used nice, clear sentences, and I could tell you were speaking extemporaneously, but you've got that natural gift. And what they're going to expect at any kind of broadcasting level, whether, you know, PKZ or whatever, the more you're able to write things down, and if you're both interested in sportscasting, use your Facebook page and write comments on things that you're seeing about games and stuff, because the more you talk it, the easier it is. I prefer radio right now, just because writing takes time. I write very quickly, but with radio, you talk, you like it, right? Yeah. Do as much as you can around here, there's so many opportunities. And thank you, Mr. Pellon, for making this opportunity available for the students. Media is fabulous. It's like the only thing anyone does in the 21st century, I think.
Absolutely.
Well, I think, did you say this, Mike, the, you know, the relation, there's one of our employees, did you say that at the beginning?
No, I didn't. Greg is related to Ray Bedard, who's an employee in the Fitchburg Public School System. And, you know, Greg had come into town earlier the day that he came to speak at the school. He hadn't been back to Fitchburg in some time. He had relatives at St. Bernard Cemetery, so he had a chance to go down, you know, and visit before he came to the school. But he's just somebody that's down-to-earth, and sometimes you see people at a high level of television like that, it's not always like that. But it just captured me, the way he engaged our students, you know, and the interactions back, and the questions were outstanding. And I said, "We just have to have him back."
Good.
So, we're fortunate that he is. Just another thing I wanted to add, I know you were talking about Christina. The newspaper is coming tomorrow to honor Christina Giadoni Smith at Goodrich tomorrow morning, so just to let you know that.
That's great.
Okay, so we can expect copies, articles on that, so.
That's wonderful.
And just a reminder, I need to get that book back.
Yes.
Once everybody has looked at it. I'm sharing my own copy.
This is excellent.
Okay, so now, we had a conversation here, I think when Jeremy was here, about the 5K for Little Feet, or someone was, and we said, "Oh, let's have the student come here." So, tonight, we have Kirsten Hard, Hardenden, Hardenden, who's here to talk to us about that, and hopefully also get some, some support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks.
Oh, beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Kirsten Hardenden, and I'm a senior at Fitchburg High School. I'm also a part of the National Honor Society, where I am the race director of the 5K for Little Feet as part of my community service project. All proceeds from this race go to purchasing shoes for the underprivileged children in the public middle and elementary schools, as well as raising funds for the Unified Track Program, which partners students with disabilities to students without disabilities to participate in track practices and meets together. I've always loved to run from a young age, and I began participating in the Greater Fitchburg Track and Field Club and running with my dad. So, this race is a cause that hits close to home, and I'm very passionate about, because I also volunteer as a coach for the program in the summer. Making sure that the kids have proper footwear, sorry, footwear, is a very big deal. I became involved with the race when I got to high school and joined the cross-country and track team, as many of my older teammates were involved with the race. Each year, this race is handed down, and as my third year as a volunteer, it was my turn to step up and become the race director. I don't do it all on my own, and I have help from 11 other students that are also part of Track, National Honor Society, and others that are just looking to help out. Planning the race is a lot of work, and there are many forms, permits, phone calls, and emails to write. A major part of our race is getting sponsorship from local businesses and restaurants, such as Select Engineering, Rollstone Bank, and Buffalo Wild Wings, to name a few. This isn't always an easy task, because going into businesses and asking for money and donations, especially as a teenager, can be very intimidating. And they don't usually expect an 18-year-old girl to walk in and say that she's a race director, so it's usually pretty funny. They're usually happy to help us, and will even challenge people in their offices to run the race with them, which is great, because they get excited and they help us raise awareness, which allows us to have more funding. These generous donations, in combination with the fees that we collect from the racers, allow us to purchase the shoes for the children. We partner with representatives from Saucony Running Company, so that we're able to provide high-quality shoes that will last the kids a long time. This is great, because since the race is in April, we deliver the shoes at the end of May, which is just in time for summer break, so they don't have to worry about their shoes falling apart on them in the summer. Having brand-new shoes is a really big deal to them, it gives them more self-confidence, and it allows them to participate in gym class and sports that they otherwise wouldn't have the opportunity to do. Last year, we were able to purchase 128 pairs of shoes. As the race grows, we look forward to be able to provide even more in 2015. Race Day is coming up quickly on April 26th, so now is when we begin to pull together any last-minute details and get the word out to the community as much as possible, which proves to always be our biggest challenge, especially because of all the snow that we have on the ground. No one's thinking about running right now. So, luckily, we get a lot of help from the community by using the DPW signs to advertise having listings in the Sentinel, and posting our websites like active.com, and we now even have a Facebook page. This year, we hope to have even more runners than last year, so that we're able to donate more shoes. I would like to thank you for having me here tonight, and I hope that you'll think about joining us on April 26th.
I have a question. When you're talking donations, are you talking about monetary donations or like raffles?
Companies donate either monetary or in kind. We get water donations. We even have places like Sneakerama that offer to donate shoes to us. We get donations as gift cards that we use as prizes. We get raffle buckets that we raffle off, so all kinds.
Okay, well, I no longer run, but I would be, love to help you volunteer for anything.
Thank you. I think the email is on the flyer, so that's how you can get in contact with us.
Okay.
So, if people want to donate, should they reach out to the email address?
Mm-hmm.
Which is 5kforlittlefeet@gmail.com?
Yep.
And I think this is wonderful what you're doing, and just from your description of this whole process, you're learning so much, I'm sure, just about how events like this are put together and what's involved, so it's going to be a great experience for you.
It is.
And who should checks be made out to?
Checks are made out to the Fitchburg High School Principals Fund, Attention 5K for Little Feet.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So, Principal, Fitchburg High School Principals Fund, Attention 5K for Little Feet. Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your chauffeur, for getting you here and back tonight, too. We appreciate that. They're always in the background.
Good luck. Thank you.
That's great.
Yeah.
Just a series of well-spoken Fitchburg students tonight, you know, doing, you know, really great things. So, now, it's, we've got kind of a health and safety agenda tonight, which is perfect. It's almost like we planned it that way. But as you know, we've been discussing, and I think it's when Craig came forward and presented his Accelerated Improvement Plan, that he mentioned, you know, that he'd been doing some piloting with some of our officers on the ALIS program, which is a very different look at emergency planning. So, Craig is here tonight. Sheila Thomas would have been here tonight, but she's had surgery and was not able to get back here, and you know Sheila, if she could have been back up and at it, she would have been here quickly. So, but she's been a key person behind the scenes on this, too. And then we have Officers Chandler and Lambert. So, I don't know who's going to do the presentation, but come on up and tell us what tell us what we need to know about the ALIS program, or ALIS approach.
Hopefully, we can be as articulate as the kids.
What's that?
I said, hopefully, we can be as articulate as the kids.
Well, I was trying to set you up.
That's a fact to follow. So, if you want to have a seat here. We're going to kind of take turns. We've got a short presentation. We're going to kind of go through it. If we can get it up the moment. Yep, sure. So, thank you for having us here tonight. Our goal is to summarize a fairly lengthy slide presentation, about 15 minutes. Just a little historical information. Officer Chandler and Officer Lambert, as our school resource officers, have played a pivotal role in helping us design, brainstorm, and come up with what we consider to be a fairly logical response to a very uncomfortable topic, quite frankly. The umbrella of school safety falls in many areas. You know, we think of fire safety as something that obviously we practice for quite frequently, minimum four times a year. And yet, there hasn't been a school fire that we're aware of fatality in school fires for over 50 years. So, we kind of look at the umbrella of school safety, not only things that are going on inside of our building, but also things that are going on inside of the community, the local neighborhoods, and things that may impact us at any given time. So, we've gone through the training, and Mike kind of pushed us towards getting out and finding out where the local trainings were. Luckily, we did, we had access to one right at Fitchburg State University. So, Sheila and I were able to attend the workshop. It's a two-day workshop, and we literally took two days to go through this presentation. So, we're going to summarize it a little faster than that. So, the ALIS program, the ALIS acronym stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. It's really more of a philosophy than it is a curriculum and a program. And it's important to note that although this acronym looks nice as it sits here in the slideshow, the philosophy is that it's very fluid and very mobile, and that if we can teach our students and our staff and really empower them to understand the components of school safety and the components of this program, that they can act on their feet when they need to. So, this doesn't work necessarily in order, but we're going to present it as such. And we are going to skip through some of the slides and try to get to the meat and potatoes of the program itself. And obviously, Officer Chandler, Officer Lambert can jump in whenever they see fit. As we look at some of the more violent episodes that have taken place in schools, and whether it's a movie theater, or the mall, or places of employment across the country, and actually internationally now, there's lots of statistics, and there's lots of really good information. And this first one sums it up. It's how long, on average, does it take for law enforcement to respond to this type of a very dynamic situation? And the average is five to six minutes. So, we feel it's important that if we can help our students, our staff, all the administration, all the folks who are in the school building, to be able to adapt and to move and to help protect themselves and protect each other for five or six minutes, we're going to increase the survivability rate of these horrific issues. In the process of doing that, it's also giving us a lot of really good training to handle other types of situations that don't necessarily fall under the more violent piece. So, again, just speaking that we train for Mother Nature, we train for fires, we train for all types of things, and it's important for us to continue our training when looking at issues that may be happening in the school itself, or in the community around the school. I believe that at this point, we have all been in some form either a high alert because of things that have been going on in the neighborhood, in the local area. So, it's important for us to be well-trained and comfortable with having to react in certain situations. So, I'm going to, Mike, I'm going to have Mike kind of talk a little bit about this, this fight-flight-or-freeze situation, because you really characterize these three pieces for me, and it really started to kind of sink in as we talked about the ALIS program.
So, your body basically has three separate responses to a stressful situation. And your body's going to react however your body's going to react. You can't, sometimes you can't control it, sometimes you can. Those three responses are fight, flight, or freeze. Obviously, the fight is to attack that person who's attacking you. Flight is to run or to evacuate. And freeze is to lock down. Now, right now, what we're typically doing in a lockdown in the Fitchburg District Schools is to lock down, is to freeze. And that's basically, you're just, like, if something were to happen, we would stay in this room and freeze. We wouldn't do fight or flight, because no one's ever really practiced it. We haven't really gone over that with anybody. You know, what we've done is we've locked down in place, so we're telling everyone to freeze. But if you have an opportunity to get out, if something's happening down in the gym, let's say, but we're in the library, there's no reason why we shouldn't be able to leave the building. That's one of the options. And that's what we're trying to create with the ALIS program, is to create options. If someone has the option of doing one of these three, if you're giving them the authority to, based on whether they're going to live or die, then that's what we want to do. We want them to be able to take care of themselves and not be locked into one response. Because if they're presented with something, they might have to do something else. And that's what we'd like to do.
And this program really focuses on empowerment, and I think that's the key piece. And we've done some work already this year with some of our students. And they really have responded very well, because they feel empowered. And they ask some very important questions about what could they do, or what might they do, and how would they react. So, it's very important that we're giving the opportunity for teachers and for students to really feel empowered about, boy, you know what? Now, I feel better because I have options. Again, as Mike said, we're looking at this in a very passive mode, when we should be looking at it in a very dynamic mode. What are the other options that we can do? Statistically, as you look at some of the incidences from across the world, actually, in cases where folks acted in a more dynamic fashion, running, protecting themselves, and so forth, again, the survivability rate and the reaction to that episode was much better. And we can post the website, but again, there's lots of statistics. But we want to go back into this program. So, part of it is common sense. Part of it is having access to the training, so that as you practice it, that it becomes ingrained, and that we understand what we should be doing. But the A is for alert. And obviously, what we want to do is we want to be able to let folks know what exactly that's going on. So, some of the key pieces to this is not just saying that there is an incident going on. And historically, I know that I can talk within the last 12 years, is much of this was done through codes. There's a canary in the library, or there's whatever, colors, and lots of other things. But really, what this program is allowing or teaching us to do is be very specific to folks about what is happening currently. And we've been practicing that. We have a medical emergency in our building, on the PA system, we'll let folks know that we have a medical emergency in the building. We're going to ask that you please stay in your classrooms until further notice. You're safe, but we need to take care of things. So, the more that kids know, and the more that teachers know, the better that they're going to feel less anxious, and they're going to be able to react the way that we would like them to. So, we've really been using all forms of communication, whether it's texting. We've been practicing with texting. We've been practicing with our Google accounts, where we've actually created Google accounts, which goes directly into a safety account that can be accessed from anywhere in the world, as long as you have access to the internet. So, it's really providing as much current information and as much ongoing information, because this situation is dynamic. We don't want to just say that we have an incident, or we don't want to say that there is somebody in the neighborhood, and we want to stay away from the doors. We want to keep folks informed on a regular basis, and alert them of what's going on.
Just to add a little bit quick to that, like, hearing about the code reds and stuff like that. The reason why people don't want to use code reds, because you have a lot of people that aren't typically in the school on any given moment. You could have a delivery person. One of you could be visiting, and you would never, might not know what the code means, or what have you. Parents, you know, might go in there, and they might not know what it is. So, if you say the alert, and you say exactly what it is, there's no way to misconstrue it. You just know what it is, and your body can just react.
We've been practicing, with Mike's supervision, we've been practicing three scenarios a year for the last, dating all the way back to BF Brown, actually. I don't think that there's been a single practice that we've gone through where somebody who wasn't familiar with us or the building was with us. There's always a parent, there's always a meeting, there's always something going on, that we have to kind of grab them and say, just come with us, and we'll show you what needs to be done. The L is for lockdown. This is something that is very typical, it's very mainstream. Again, it's a very passive reaction to a very dynamic situation. So, we do practice lockdowns. We teach kids how to do this. There are safe ways to do it. So, we want to make sure that they're comfortable, because if there is something in the close proximity to where they are, they need to know exactly what they're going to do. This, the ALIS philosophy, however, takes it a few steps further. And it's something that we've added to one of our lockdowns, just this past practice drill earlier this year, is barricading. And showing kids and teaching kids that if a doorway is an obstacle, you can make that doorway more of an obstacle by barricading it, by using furniture, by doing things that would distract a would-be assailant, and make it much more difficult to have access to the room, or to children, to whoever it is that they want to go. So, that's something, again, you know, I think everywhere in the district, kids are practicing this lockdown, and they're getting away from doorways, and they're getting away from windows, and they understand to be quiet. So, there's some really fundamental pieces that they have been practicing. And yet, this philosophy adds a whole nother layer to it. The layer about, okay, well, we may have to lock down, but then eventually, we may get up and evacuate. It's much like a fire drill. Many times, a fire, and we'll come in, and they'll block a doorway. So, again, students have to understand, well, this is my main exit, but I can't go through that door now. I have to go somewhere else. We want to use that same philosophy with our drills around school safety.
And just to add on that real quick, too, lockdown is definitely a starting point. We're not, obviously, like Craig's saying, we don't want to get rid of lockdown. Lockdown is definitely something that is still going to be done. And as far as the barricade goes, when we started this slide, the response time was five to six minutes. So, if we can prolong that access for that person to get in there, even a few minutes, that's a lot more time that we have to get there before anything really happens.
You guys, part of your presentation, are you going to show that slide on Columbine?
He just skipped over it. I did skip over it.
Because that was so, if you mind showing it?
No, no.
And talking about what it is, and how, because it's really related to this lockdown or not. But I know when you showed it to all the administrators, it was powerful.
Yeah. So, basically, I mean, in the Columbine, the transcript from that event is online, you know, and we've suggested for folks to listen to it. It is very visceral, it's very emotional. But it's a good training piece for us. Part of the incident that took place at Columbine was students requesting permission from the adults to exit. But because of their practice and their protocols, they stayed in place. And had they not done that, then a good portion of this event that took place may have been avoided. Or at least those folks who are in that high-traffic area in the library had exits that they, at least at that time, they did not take advantage of. And that's why it's important, as we look at this, to say, we may evacuate immediately, we may lock down, and then evacuate. So, everything is pretty much on the table. And there have been a number of instances that we can go back, and they're actually in this full presentation, whether it's Virginia Tech, Columbine, and some of the other violent situations that have taken place in either public school or higher ed, that there were opportunities, and there were instances where folks acted in such a way that saved their lives. And there are others that, you know, it didn't, because it was such more of a passive practice, that...
Just the big thing with this is the situation, the danger was coming over from the right side, the lower right corner. That's where the shooting was happening, and they were going into the library. And at the top, the top-left corner was an easy exit for these people that were in the library. And they didn't use it. They were being told, because that's all they knew, was to stay down, stay down. So, they didn't. But eventually, the people that weren't injured or killed were evacuated. So, I mean, the slide's showing, okay to leave after, but not before. I mean, it's clearly, would have been better off to leave before than after.
As Mike continues to inform us, and kind of bring to our attention, each one of these issues, we learn a lot from. And it's our responsibility to kind of digest that information and put it into a working piece that we can train our own staff and students And here's just an example of, you know, obviously, on the left, we have piled up chairs. So, if somebody was to make their way through that door, and doors tend not to be impenetrable, you know, it would be a tripping hazard, it could be a safety hazard. It would be very difficult for somebody to make their way through that, through the pile of chairs. And that could give somebody just enough time to react and move and get out of the way. The way that was described to us in our training is that folks have, they're almost running through like a videotape in their head. They have things very much mapped out, and they know exactly what is going to happen. At least, they think they do. And anything that we can do to kind of break that film and make them go elsewhere, or react differently, is going to, it's going to slow down the pace. And hopefully, law enforcement will arrive in a timely fashion, and we'll be reacting in such a way that will increase our safety. The two-by-four, and a few pieces of webbing. Kids were asked, could we use cords from the computer? We could do that. We could wrap it around the doorknob. So, they immediately came up with all kinds of very interesting, and not necessarily sophisticated, but something would be very effective in preventing folks from coming in. Moving heavy objects in front of doorways, again, things that can be moved, moved out of the way, and then we can exit. So, again, I think, and we mentioned this a little bit earlier, is just this, we live in the information with technology, with media, and with social media. We have looked in ways that we can communicate consistently and constantly with our folks inside the building. So, if indeed, somebody was locked down in an area, that we could continue to communicate with them, and continue to feed and inform them of the ongoing situation. Again, it's very dynamic. It's not, it's not something that's very static. We have to be able to react and move quickly.
I know that there was a situation where there was a shooting with the boy in the cafeteria. And kids were saying, they were actually tweeting out not to go to the calf, there's a shooting, or someone shot. And I know Fitchburg High has a Twitter account, and I know kids, my son goes to Fitchburg High, he's on the Twitter account, and he uses that probably every day. So, it's definitely something that, you know, that is a valuable tool, in getting that message out.
One of the pieces that we've been practicing is just to allow our teachers an opportunity to provide us with information for which students are with them. So, it just happened, we were practicing it, and the teacher, she was texting in some names. One of the students said, let me see your phone, I'll do that for you. And they were so much faster, and so much more accurate, you know, so there is some advantage to that. But again, the ownership to that was transferred from the adult to the child who saw the need, who had expertise, and took over. It was great. It was, it actually, it came through, just as we would hope. If you want to talk about the counterpiece?
Okay, the counter, this is obviously, we don't, we're not asking people to counter unless they absolutely have to. This is where people get a little hesitant on the program. Countering is only if you absolutely have to. Obviously, you have other options, run, hide. But if you have to fight, people, you know, you're going to want to do something. You have to do something. You can't just crawl up there in a corner and be a victim. So, you can survive, you can survive contact with an armed intruder. Police miss 70, 80% in a dynamic event. In a stressful, in a stressful event, I mean, we have training, we're still missing. So, like Craig was saying earlier, when you interrupt that film that this person has in their mind of how things are going to go, and you, you know, swarm him, or throw things at him, he has to react to that. If he's reacting to something else, he can't pull a trigger, or he can't attack, or he can't do this. He's got to react to what you're doing. And, you know, in a group, you know, of, let's say, high school ca- And, you know, in a group, you know, of let's say, high school kids, you know, they can defend themselves. Are we asking elementary school kids to do this? No, obviously not, but are teachers able to do it? It was, you know, at Sandy Hook, the principal got in the person's way, she, you know, she did something, she tried to stop him, she delayed him, she probably saved a few lives in doing so. And that's, and that's what we're saying, give people the option, because some people have that in them. Not everybody, and we're not telling people to do it, we're not advising it, but if that's your only option, if you have no other option, we want to give people that option, leave it up to them, because that's the ones who should be making the decision, not us. I shouldn't be telling somebody when I'm not there to go hide and you just, you know, be a victim. They have to take accountability for their own actions.
And as Mike continues to remind us, you know, even with younger elementary school students, we teach them stranger danger right from the beginning. You bite, you kick, you scratch, you scream, you do anything that you can to help save yourself. And so this isn't something new that, you know, that we're teaching when kids become middle schoolers. You know, we've been teaching our children ever since they were old enough and there are booklets that we can pass around that are put out through this Alice organization that are developmentally appropriate for younger children with stories and pictures and so on and so forth. We had an interesting conversation when we're talking about this with some of the students at Long Joe and they said, "Mr. Schalfo, you tell me that I can throw a book at somebody if they come through that door." I said, "If somebody's coming through that door to hurt you, you can throw anything that you can find, you go right ahead." So sometimes we just have to give them the permission to do things and hopefully that's what this program allows us to do. And then ultimately, is this evacuation. And the evacuation can take place at the very beginning, it could happen anywhere in the middle, it could happen at the very end. These types of things are very fluid, they're moving throughout the building theoretically. Our last practice, again, under Mike's supervision back in the fall, we were able to lock down half the building and evacuate half the building. And we did it in a very timely fashion. So we're trying to incorporate some of these strategies as we move forward to get kids to understand that I should be moving and that's a natural response, is that natural movement. Sitting in a corner is not necessarily a natural reaction to this very stressful situation.
And a big part of this evacuation part is the reunification points. You have two separate, like Long Joe, we came up with two separate points, one was the senior center, we evacuated them, it's a big open lobby, had plenty of room for the kids to go into, kids would report from there, so we could account for all the kids and they would go there. And, you know, one of the kids asks us, "Well, if it's one of us, you know, how do we know they're not going to go there?" Well, obviously, we would tell them, you know, the police department knows that they're going to be going there, ambulances are going to be going there, because kids be, end up going there hurt or scared, you know, she'd have all your resources going down there as well, so it'd be, it'd be well protected. Another thing is, is a lot of, when we debrief with the staff and some of the students, some of them said, "Well, you know, when I went out, I went along the building, went to go down there." And that was, that was eye-opening for them, that they actually crossed the building in front of windows and stuff and they thought, "Well, I wouldn't, I shouldn't have done that." Well, they would have never known that unless they actually practiced it. So if you practice it, you kind of realize, you know, what you would do and what you shouldn't do.
And I think this really sums up this quote by Teddy Roosevelt, "In a moment of decision, the best thing you can do is the right thing, the next best thing is to do the wrong thing and the worst thing you can do is to do nothing." And I think that that kind of sums up this philosophy of being active, being movement, being empowered and making decisions on your own and in the moment. I think at least once a year, actually for the last several practice lockdowns that we've had, students have been stranded in bathrooms and they were on their own. And as we walk through, we walk into the bathrooms and we knock, "Is anybody in here?" And almost every time in the last year and a half, "I'm in here." So you hear that little voice and they were in there and they were stranded, I said, "Well, when you can get out, you got to get to the classroom as quickly as you can." And they said, "I couldn't get out." I said, "I understand." So at that point, you hide and you're very quiet. So kids are already feeling a little bit of this and able to adjust to it on the fly.
Just when the information part comes in, they can text them and...
Right, exactly.
...where they are and account for themselves.
Yep. So those are the main pieces to this, this program, obviously, like I said, we did this in two days. So these are just the mass, the big points. The Alice program is one of several, there's many out there. It was endorsed through the Governor Patrick's Safety Committee that met and went through lots of information. It's endorsed through law enforcement nationally.
The U.S. Department of Education endorses it as well.
So it's very mainstream, it's being updated and information is on their website 24/7 and it's accessible to anyone without fee. It's a, it's a free website. Questions?
That's incredible to be teaching, it's sad that we have to do that, but to let them have that tool, that if they're in that situation, that they're empowered, they can, they can help themselves, it's, but it just sends chills up my spine.
Yeah, it's not a comforting thing to think about, that's for sure.
So is the plan, that was a great presentation. Is the plan to roll this out at the school?
All the schools are quite doing this yet.
I would hope so, yep. Like I said, we've already have added some of the pieces to it into what we've been currently doing and we've been doing it for years and years and years, as have many of the schools across the district. So adding some of the dynamic pieces to it, I think, is a natural step.
Just to add to that, obviously, I think it should go into every school and I think, you know, a lot of, like, people say, "Well, how can you do this to the elementary, you know, with elementary school kids?" And, you know, that booklet is just one example about how you would, you would approach them with it and there's more than that, than that book. But there's a lot of, there's already a lot of anxiety with elementary school kids going into middle school and then from middle school into high school. And now, if you, if you take an elementary school kid and you put them into a middle school where they're already afraid and now you're presenting this to them, the perception for them is, "Oh, my gosh, you know, this isn't safe." You know, but if you're teaching this from kindergarten, it's just like a fire drill to them. It's like just something that they do all, every year. So, so they're already used with it, they've grown up with it, just like you grow up with stranger danger and, you know, you get away from strangers, you get away from something bad. That's all we're doing in the school, we're just giving them those options.
Yeah, my kids' first lockdown drill after Sandy Hook, I was much more freaked out than they were.
Yeah, absolutely, definitely.
And I actually freaked out, I mean, I'm glad it's important, it's an awful topic, but the other thing I find interesting from hearing about this from my coworkers at Pittsburgh State who went through the training, is the, how fast these incidents are typically over, about five minutes start to finish? And at Columbine, it was like 40, right? Because of the old...
Columbine was longer because they didn't reach the school, they didn't go into the school, so there was no, there was no danger for the assailants to stop.
Right.
So that was the only reason why and that, and we learned, unfortunately, we learned a valuable lesson, but it took a lot to learn that lesson.
Their training then was to wait 14 before they entered the school. Now we're trained, if you're a one, you go in as one, if you're a five, you go in as five.
Right.
The ultimate is to stop the threat.
Right. But I do, I do think, and I thank you guys for this, because I do ultimately think it's very empowering, because it's something to do, something to think about, something that you anticipated somewhat, so I think it's great.
Does any of this training speak to the use of technology as a potential part of the response?
In what way?
All the texting, I guess.
Just, yeah, I mean, like the, obviously, the alert, like to get the alert out, that would mean that you're going to have to have a very good in-school alert system, so whether that be the...
The IM, we have an internal messaging system that you can access on your computer. Our Connect Ed service, we can send out texts and send out messages to families or I could send out the same information to just my staff members. So there's lots of different ways that we can use that.
And the intercom would obviously be very important. So to make sure it's getting to every room, you know, every part of the school, wherever you are, to make sure you actually hear that. The biggest issue we found at Long Joe was the bathrooms. So if you're in the bathroom, you wouldn't necessarily hear it. So the teachers from across the hall have been, have been told that and they, and they do it, because we check and they'll run over to the bathroom before they shut and make sure no one's in there. Now, sometimes kids are in the hall, so they'll run into the bathroom after the teacher has already checked it and, but other than that, it's been, it's been great.
And we've, we've done it, we've done them during the worst possible moments, during a transition time, where everybody's in the hallway. We have 460 students in the hallways and we would call a drill and see how that it would react. And the kids, they communicated well, they took it very seriously and they shared the information with each other and they moved, we had some classes with two students in it, we had other classes with 38 students in it, but just because of the proximity of where they were, that's the way it is. You know, we talked about using interior doors that are adjoining doors and we can kind of move people down hallways without even exiting the classrooms into the hallway and just move through the internal doorways and stair systems.
I wondered about the alert piece, so, you know, you say, you know, use your common sense, but if you're, if you're a teacher and you, your common sense says, "Go," are you having to get the alert to say, "Go"?
Go. No, go, no.
So it's, but how do you know there isn't something out on the other end?
Well, that's, that's the informed piece. So if, if we're at Long Joe Middle School and something happens in the cafeteria, let's say, and then somebody is alerted to that, then they put it out to everybody and say, you know, "There's a gunman in the cafeteria." Then, now, if that's put out on the intercom and through IM and everyone's getting that, everyone knows that something's going on in the cafeteria. So you're basically saying, you know, everyone on the left side of the building facing Long Joe can basically get out and get out as fast as possible.
And that's coming how? How is that message coming?
That's what they're being, that's what they're being trained. They're being trained that depending on where the situation is happening and what information they're getting, they're going to decide what's best for them. Like someone that's across the hall from the cafeteria might be, "Okay, we need to lock down, because I'm not going out into that hallway." And they would lock down and barricade, because they don't want to go out into the danger. But if you're on the opposite side of the building, you know through this training that, "Okay, I have time to get out, because something's going on in the caf," and you don't even hesitate. Now, that's going to take practice, because you...
Can I ask you though? Because I think back to some of those earlier incidents where people were pulling a fire alarm, hoping to get a mass exodus out of the building.
Yep.
So, I mean, this is the, I mean, I think it's, I think it's better to do something than not.
Right.
And I'm relieved that that's the message now, to just do something.
Right.
But I just, I've always wondered about that, you know, like you can't really, you don't really know what the plan is, I mean, you're counting on good information.
The big, the big thing was, like, some kids have actually asked that same question. So they said, "Well, how do we know there's not a second shooter, if something's not going on somewhere else?" Well, if I'm walking down Main Street and I see someone with a gun in front of me, I'm not going to stay there.
Right.
I'm going to leave. And if I encounter something else, then I'm going to leave there. So even if you're leaving the building, if you, if you happen to run into something else, you can still run the other way, evacuate, or you can lock down into a room, whatever you need to do, or you can counter.
I just shuddered to think that you made the wrong choice and now you've got a parent that you...
Right, yeah.
I mean, that's just the worst possible thing.
Absolutely.
And statistically, in the finer points to part of this training is on a mass evacuation, the more chaotic, the better.
Okay.
Yeah.
Run, run in every direction, you know, because fire drills are in a straight line where, you know, so that's not necessarily the best-case scenario. Whereas I've, I've talked to others that are in the central mass area that have practiced this, they have more green space around their building and they're taught to run to the tree line. So they literally practice that, they mass exodus the building in chaos, run to the tree line and then every, all the adults have to go out and kind of find them and bring them all back, which I don't think we're ready for that just yet.
It's interesting, I was at a conference last week and one of the things I saw and I brought it back is that Connect Ed, which is what we use, Blackboard Connect, has a new app. It's a free app that you can download on any phone to use exactly for those kinds of messaging things.
Right.
So I have the information and I've got to look more into it, but we already have Connect Ed as part of our system.
Yep.
And it can be used not only just for staff, but it can be used for students, for parents, for anybody.
Yep.
So that if you, it might be, I'm going to look more into it and get, I've got the information, but it might be one of those pieces of communication that could be used almost like instant messaging, but that could hit a broader group of people. So I'll bring that information forward.
A lot on that and, Mayor, what you were saying as well, is that the technology and what Craig kind of alluded to it earlier was the Google accounts. Now, when we have kids evacuate and they lock down in their school, in the classrooms, they're reporting, the teachers are reporting who they have and what kids they have, just as some kind of accountability of where the kids are. Now, I don't, we've never had 100% even in a practice drill. I don't think you're going to get 100%, but if we can account for 70, 80, you know, 90% of the kids, that's less people we have to track down afterwards. They report, they type in and it goes to this Google account. Each school has, has a Google account that Patrick has, has set up. And you can look at it on the computer, like Craig was saying, an email from any computer. So your command center, you can pull this up and you can go into that account and see exactly what kids are where and who, and who's where. Now, the benefit of that is, the person, if you have an injured student or if you know information about something that something's going on, if the assailant's in there or anything like that, you can give out that information and we can relay information back to you through that email. So you can say, you know, "Help's on the way, you know, we'll try and get there as soon as we can," you know, that kind of thing. So it's, it's very valuable.
Okay, well, thanks so much. This is a great help and we're, we're just going to keep rolling this out, you know, and responses. So now Pam Rivers is here to bring you up to date on our essential school health services
All right, so, good evening.
Good evening, Pam.
Thank you for having me here this evening to speak about the essential school health services and the related programs. Okay, so here are outcomes for this evening. And what I want to share is that we, I'm sure you've heard before, but attendance in the early grades are correlated with school achievement and dropout rates. So when we look at healthcare for all students, we can affect them being in school, regularly attending, we look at their readiness to learn, we track their return to class rates and the ways in which school health and school nurses can indirectly improve attendance and academic outcomes or achievement outcomes. So what are some of the things that we do right off the bat, the healthcare measures? We look at mandated screenings. And why do we perform and look at mandated screenings? Because they right away rule out barriers to learning and that's exactly what we want to do. Dental screenings are another screening that's done, again, to rule out the barriers of learning. If we think about it, if we're in pain and discomfort, particularly with some type of a dental issue, we are not really going to be there fully attending. And the number one reason for absenteeism is, in fact, dental, dental issues. So health, health data collection and review. This is one of the essential roles of the school health services. And what, the reason it's essential is that it informs the trends, areas of need, and it helps us to meet the students' needs. So here we have an example of health data collection. It's reflective of the ability to care for the students, to have them safely attend on a regular basis and again, be ready to learn. Okay, so now we're looking at some of the examples of the special healthcare needs, more on the basis of the physical healthcare needs and some of the commonly shared information. And again, it's important to know that these children can attend and the families can know that they are safely cared for during the school day. it's important to know that these children can attend and the families can know that they are safely cared for during the school day.
Is this a part of the diabetes program?
Is what?
Are we still part of the diabetes?
I'm going to share that with you.
I saw this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So what, again, under special healthcare needs, is that students today have the benefit, children of succeeding in relation to medical technology. And those students are again able to attend the schools and be cared for safely. Tube feedings are something that we definitely see in our schools, and this provides nourishment so that the students have the health that they need in that way to learn. And the other ways, obviously, we can dispense medications. We've heard about the importance of immunizations and related to healthcare. So those are one some of the things also. So getting on to the diabetes. So when we look at this, we look at the school community. Well, the school community is part of the larger community, and it behooves us to work with that larger community. So in doing that, we coordinated under this Care Coordination Project. So Pittsburgh, in connection with the neighboring towns of or cities of Gardner and Lemonster, worked directly with, under the Care Coordination with UMass, the pediatric endocrinology and the pediatric pulmonology. And it's quite, you know, focused on what we want to do. We want to improve the healthcare services of the students and the families. It doesn't happen just in the school, just at home, but throughout. We definitely want to look at the community-based care services and combine them with the schools and what's offered in the community. And, you know, increase this, provide this, work together as best we can, and ultimately improve student health status, attendance, and clearly, time on learning. Oh, and there it is, sorry. So moving right along, besides the physical healthcare needs, there's the behavioral, psychological, social, emotional healthcare needs that the students have that we need to address. It's part of that whole picture that we're looking at and the health and safety connection. So again, we want to look outside ourselves and how are we doing this? How are we connecting? One of the ways we're doing this is through our lifelines program, and that is in partnership with the Department of Public Health, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and the UMass Psychiatry Program. And again, reaching out, there's also examples of other agencies that we can support the students and their families with. We've heard about emergencies tonight. Certainly, nursing and healthcare is part of emergency responses. What is what's happened with this over the years? We've been a part of the trauma and crisis protocols that go on. We were part of the Regional School Health Coalition, the Crisis Intervention and Response Guide Training Two, which was a whole two that can be utilized. That was through many different communities, cities and towns that are in the central mass area, and then we shared it out statewide. And it also has resources, because like anything, once it's in print, it's probably old, but it does have resources that that can be updated and all. And then Joe Richardson and I were had the invite through Andre to be part of the newly formed School Safety Regional Coalition of Central Massachusetts in Worcester. We went to our second meeting this morning, and interestingly enough, we did much talking about the Alice Program and what that looks like in this district, what it looks like in other communities. And I also have what I will call the fortune to be invited to Framingham this past Friday and actually heard from Michelle Gay, who was one of the parents of one of the Sandy Hook children that unfortunately did not survive that situation. She is part of the Safe and Sound Schools, I believe is the correct website, and she had so much to offer. And a lot of what talked about, it was at the lower level, but one of the things that that she is is really, you know, putting into place, they did a lot of training and all, but they talked about, and we talked about today, that whole muscle memory, you know, going through things like the fire drills over and over again, the students, you know, know what to do. And and it was part of, you know, what we are, you know, naturally wanting to do. We want to escape. We want to get away from the danger. And there was a number of students, eleven, that did just that. They saw an opportunity and they went. And they went from what they were trained and they got out safely. So she, you know, along with all of these other resources, is is somebody wonderful to connect with and to further what we're doing. So again, medical emergency response is something we have to be very much aware of. We need to not only have plans within our schools, with every one of our schools within our district, but we also have to train staff members. And because it doesn't happen just between like the, you know, the start of school and the end of school, it's, you know, it can happen before school, after school, and other connected programs, on field trips. We need to be ready for this.
Where do we have defibrillators now? Are they in all of our schools?
We have them in all of our schools. We have, and they go out on the athletic fields and
It's interesting because there was a superintendent's listserv where they send things out.
Sure.
And they sent one out, one school system was looking at it, and most of the schools that responded to the email didn't have defibrillators in any of their schools.
Wow. That's really, really interesting.
So now, I mean, I want to follow up with MASS, and I'd like to get a list because it's something, again, we just kind of take it for granted. Hey, we did. And when I saw it, I thought, I think, you know, I'm reading this, and I said, I think we have them in all of our schools now, and we do.
We do, we do, yeah. And and the other thing that we had done when they first started rolling out and a lot of people were offering them, we're like, well, okay, we went with what we thought was the best at the time, but it was much smarter for us to look at, okay, what do our emergency services have? What does the ambulance use? What does the fire use? Well, why are we not having the same systems? So that's indeed what we went with. We partner with them, the same devices, you know, different trainings, all of that type of thing. And you will see literally the Zoll is what we have, and this is a picture of what we'll see around, along with the listing of who's trained from year to year. And we circulate through email and other invites, different trainings that are done so that people can be recertified. It's usually a two-year certification period. And the other important thing is is EpiPens, and certainly that a lot of times will happen with field trips. We do training so that they can safely go out on field trips. EpiPens is used in life-threatening allergy situations. And in our school district alone, ten percent of our population, that's approximately five hundred and two students, have some sort of life-threatening allergy. So you want to make sure that you, you know, have the training, have this in place. Okay, so here we are, Gillette Stadium, our Super Bowl champion Patriots.
Anything to get that in a slide, huh?
So what I want to show you here is, and what I want you to take away is how the nurses interface with over ninety percent of the student population. So there's a number of student encounters throughout the year, which clearly exceeds a capacity at Gillette Stadium.
That's the reason.
Okay. And another way to look at it is the encounters, again, what that looks like per day. And when I see this, it just, to me, speaks so strongly of, you know, the need and the importance of that full-time school nursing component, the professionals that are in the buildings, that we have the fortune to meet the student needs, to cover their needs, you know, and there are other places that it's 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 different. And it's so important. So communication is so key. I talked before about our school community, our larger community. We need to have this communication, these relationships throughout. It's just vital. And so to further, what else are part of school nursing and health services? What are they included in? We had looked at the slide in how how many students they interface with. You know, just such huge numbers, they know the students. They really need to be a part of the different meetings, all of these different committees, and I'm happy to say that they are. And and just to also show that that they, because they know the students, they bring such value to information like, you know, the ability of having students participating, again, in before school, after school, field trip activities, all these valuable learning opportunities, you know, they they need to attend those and attend them safely. So again, school nurses, their other part is that they're reinforcers of education. And they can reinforce the education, the ongoing benefits of the nutrition and physical activities. We've had that shared before. We know the importance of that. And here we are. This is a slide absolutely depicting what active learners benefit from. So we have the visual of what the brain looks like after twenty minutes of exercise. Our Safe Roots to School programs that are throughout all of the elementary schools and the McKay School, which is the intermediate school. Twenty minutes of that walking lights up the brain. They're ready to learn. The other benefits, you know, improvement in grades, test scores, reading, spelling, math, all the things that we measure. Again, the brain activity, improved behaviors, improved memory, and really overall well-being. There was information shared over the weekend. And the final point of what we really need to test and look for is well-being. I mean, you just do better when you're feeling well. So I'll close with, from yesterday and today, health services within the schools. The whole point was overall health, which equals or optimal health, which equals overall achievement. And from the Marshall Memo, the two quotes, "Kids who are active and fit do better in school, better on achievement tests, better on measures of brain health." And we truly are teaching kids to take care of themselves beyond school. So thank you again for having me and allowing me to share this.
Thank you, Pam. Very efficient, good good information presented in a way that Tom Brady would be proud of.
Because it seems different school to school.
It should not be, but go ahead.
It's just some some schools strike me as very strict. And I just, I'm curious, where is the policy that food food can be in classrooms?
Right, right. So so we, you know, the way we support that in our district is we have our wellness policy and we have our food allergy policy. The wellness policy obviously speaks to, you know, the wellness, the nutritional foods that should be offered in the different venues, and again, during the school day, before, after, school-connected activities. Then there's the life-threatening food allergy policy, and that absolutely speaks to why you do not have certain parties with foods bringing in all the other, you know, foods that are brought in, the awareness of, there are many, many individuals with allergies, whether it's students and or staff, and we have to have this awareness, and we have to make sure that, you know, we're overseeing and addressing it. That there is that the principals are able to make the call in regards to is it is whatever, like a particular food item, a positive contribution to a lesson or something like that. But but overall, it should, that awareness is there. There was also a pamphlet that was done where we put out, and it literally showed, okay, so yes, you can have your celebrations, yes, you can make that child feel special, but here are other ways. You don't have to bring in the food. You do not have to do that. Here's the other ways of doing it. And some of it was, you know, involving quite a bit of it involving activity, like the jamming minutes or, you know what I mean, or or being the one that that kind of leads the transitioning to the different centers and things like that. There's many different ways that
So if you're eating breakfast in a classroom, though, right, and say somebody has a milk allergy, how does that, and it's not a party, so you're not really in violation of that policy, but what happens if, like, milk gets on it? I'm just curious. And I don't think it's, I mean, I think the world is
You think milk works that way, does it?
Not necessarily, no.
It's ingested.
Yeah, but but so anything like that, it's number one, that the child themselves, the individual themselves, the staff, whatever, need to, you know, have that awareness, knowledge of what they what's safe for them, what's not safe for them. And then, you know, it's reinforced within the environments, whether it's a classroom, the cafeteria, or whatever. And and we've even had students that have, you know, like, oh, you know, we have to, you know, assist in this situation because we know that, you know, it's just not a safe thing for that person. So, I mean, it's on many different levels that that's addressed. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Very good, thank you.
I like the setup that Memorial has out here in the front.
Isn't that nice?
Yeah.
Yeah, they've done a nice job.
You look at it with all the services and what needs to be done.
Right.
They did, nurses did a nice job.
They did. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I just have a comment. This, as I was reading this at home before the meeting, I just thought, wow, this is this is so easy to understand. It's a really, it's a really, really great document. It's
Very crisp.
Yes, and but very, very precise in the information in terms of the okay, one physically active lesson creates twenty-one percent decrease in teacher's time managing behavior. And that's a really interesting statistic because what I often, you know, the things I hear from parents where they have an issue, it's sometimes there's a disruptive child in the classroom type of thing. And it it seems that that's that's what I've heard more than often. And although I'm not hearing, you know, what I'm hearing more now, certainly, and seeing it on social media is praise. And especially, it's interesting on some of the Facebook pages where a theme will come up. And I've seen so many parents speak up for, for example, the nutrition in schools, the fact that we have these fresh fruits and vegetables. And there's got to be a direct correlation between, you know, eating eating those fresh fruits and vegetables versus the highly processed food. And then that correlates to, you know, so so many decreases to the nurse's office. One anecdote I heard was that, you know, kids, schools that don't have chocolate milk have fewer visits to the nurse's office, fewer behavioral issues, you know. I I don't know. That's an anecdote. So I I don't know what to to make of that, but the fact that this is so, and that we have kids who have tube feedings. I mean, that, I guess I'd heard that, but you kind of see it here, and that really takes you back. I mean, that's a pretty serious medical ongoing condition. And so the school nurses have to be, you know, really on top of things to work with kids who have feeding issues, who who can't swallow or whatever it is.
Right, right.
Well, and that's what Pam was alluding to, is just like the defibrillators, not all school systems have nurses at all schools. Many of them have different kinds of arrangements that do not provide that level of care. And we've had it now at least as long as I've been here. So it's been for a long time. And part of it is because you don't know what you're going to be responding to.
Exactly.
Now, how many of our nurses are, for like, I have a friend in the district, their son has a type one diabetes. How many of our nurses are equipped to handle all the maintenance for those?
All of them. So we were part of a program previously that Andre spoke of through with, you know, continued training. But we have the connection with UMass and with other vendors that you can just make the call and they come and they'll do the trainings right there. So say it's like a new piece of equipment or something, they come right out. As a matter of fact, there was a question from one of the nurses about inhaled insulin. So I, you know, went through my contact right away at UMass, pediatric endocrinology. She gave me the information back. I was able to circulate that back out through this this Care Coordination Program. We actually had the specialist from the pediatric pulmonology come out to us, and she actually did a training with all of our districts. So she does statewide trainings all over the place, but she came right to the high school here, well, not here, but to Fitchbury High School and did a training for the Pittsburgh Gardner and Lemonster nurses. And it was related to, you know, the asthma needs and all. And and the benefit was that, you know, the students sometimes transition from, you know, community to community. So we we can all work together that way also.
But these kids are able to stay in school and
Yeah. Oh, absolutely.
Be healthy, that's great.
Absolutely. And some of that is, you know, the communication with the families. By the way, did you know that your child does not have to miss school for that? We have the ability to take care of that right here. We'll we'll work that all out with yourself, your physicians, yeah.
If you want, if you want to see a wonderful program, it's in the CAPS Collaborative Program in the Hubbard's Incentive School
Okay.
in first and second grade, and you see the children with the feeding tubes, wheelchair, I mean. And the the students in the class, I just, they benefit from these kids being in the classroom. It's just unbelievable.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, thanks so much.
Thanks so much.
We benefit from you.
Thanks.
Pam. All right. So lastly, the donations and school choice. So there's a donation of Moby Max tablet, estimated sixty-nine dollars to Rhine goal students from Moby Max. Donation of box of ice hockey tape for sticks, estimated seventy-five dollars for the hockey team, Mr. and Mrs. Fleming. Donation of twenty Nike undershirts, twenty twenty sweatshirts, and one ten Rawlings catcher's mitt, a hundred and twenty dollars, and batting mat and tee, four hundred and five dollars. So total value of one thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars from the Pittsburgh Baseball Boosters. Recommendation of accepting a Hack Attack pitching machine, baseball boosters, two thousand dollars. And this, and then accept a donation of fifty-one championship football jackets, estimated at twenty-five hundred dollars to recognize the outstanding championship season. at $2,500, to recognize the outstanding championship season, Central Mass champions, from the Pittsburgh Football Boosters Club. And then the last one is to support my recommendation to invest $1,280 in school choice funds for 20 JV uniforms for the baseball program, because we have so many kids that we're going to have a JV team.
That's great.
And they need uniforms. And we moved, we changed to the Cardinal red, and that was the only section that hadn't made the transition. So, this will complete full transition for our baseball team.
That's great.
Great. Okay. Seeing no one here to publicly justify, we're going to move on to the action items. Is there a motion to accept donations 491 through 495?
Make that motion.
Just a second.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion passes. 493, this is school choice dollars for the JV baseball program.
Take a motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Reposed, motion passes. And last but not least, a $576,385 and 25 cents live warrant.
Motion pay the bills.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Reposed, motion passes. Is there a move to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And adjourned.